In enforcement, the appeal may be made to the Board of Appeals by any person or any officer, department, board, or commission of the city affected by a decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The appeal shall be taken within forty-five days, and we are within forty-five days of the appeal, Pam. We are, as action complaint filed with the Planning and Zoning Commission and with the city clerks, on notice of appeal specifying the grounds thereof. The Planning and Zoning Commission shall forthwith transmit to the Board of Appeals all the papers continuing in the record which the action appealed from was taken. A public hearing will be set, which is today, advertised and conducted by the Board of Appeals, and it shall render a decision on the appeal. Within thirty days following the close of the public hearing, the Board of Appeals shall render a decision on the appeal. So if there's no decision rendered on the appeal today, we have thirty days in which to render that appeal. Oral and written testimony will be considered during this public hearing, and interested parties are encouraged to attend. We have some people in the audience. And written comments can be submitted no later than 1:00 p.m. October 3rd, 2022, to the following: The City Clerk of the City of Virginia, 327 First Street South, Virginia, Minnesota, 55792. This public hearing is noted as dated September 24th, 2022, by Pamela Labine, our city clerk. Pam, have you received any written communications with respect to this public hearing regarding this appeal?
No, I have not, Mayor.
Have you received any telephone calls requesting information be disseminated at this public hearing?
No, I have not, Mayor.
Thank you. So we have the appeal, and would first of all go around the room to the elected body. Have any questions, comments, before we move to the appeal made by Iron Trail Motors? Or the... Any questions, comments, or concerns from the elected body? Please, Councilor Paulson.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm just reviewing the materials here. And I just want to establish, I don't know if our city attorney needs to weigh in on this, but I want to address the... It's in the packet, but it's also in our handout, the comparison of, I guess, giving out the permit to another business entity, Super One or Miners Incorporated. What the comparison is from the variance that was granted to that business, and how it is being used in comparison when we're discussing water discharge. So I'm trying to correlate the relevancy of, one is it a building versus one will have water and runoff and water discharge? So I'm wondering what the relevancy is. Is it just relevant that they're comparing one business was given this variance and the other business was denied? Or what would be the relevancy to equivalent these two projects?
All right, Mr. Lindsay?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilor, I think the answer to your question is this. So it is, the more information that you can collect on one of these proceedings, the better off we all are for a fuller understanding. And I think in your question, I think you've kind of got the answer. When you evaluate a request for a variance, they are particular to each individual request, though the reason that a party would put forward examples of other structures or other properties where similar variances, as far as setbacks, have been granted, it looks at and puts into consideration how the city has treated others that are, you know, we'll say similarly situated, even though I understand that you indicate that the projects are a little bit different. And it also shows, it goes, bears on the aspect of the evaluation where you look at the character of the neighborhood and whether the requested variance would be harmful or detrimental to the general character of the neighborhood. So I'm not sure if that answers your question, but in order, as a result of this proceeding, the council's going to have to issue a decision that's going to have to include some findings. And that's each variance request or appeal or consideration is bound by a single analysis of those considerations upon which you have to make findings. And so is the fact that there is another property that has a setback variance similar to the one that's being requested dispositive? No. But it does bear on some of the considerations that the council will make as far as character of the neighborhood and how these setback requirements have been treated in the area. So I hope that answers the question.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Paulson. Any other questions, comments at this point in time for anybody on the committee? I would like to invite the appellant in this matter, Virginia Building LLC, to come forward. And if you just turn the light on the podium to green, and please state your name and who you represent for the record, and welcome to the public hearing, appeal process for planning and zoning. Sir?
Thank you. My name is Darwood Lindahl. I am the architect working with Iron Trail Motors or Virginia Building LLC. I want to give you, I want to have this opportunity to thank you for giving us this opportunity to come before the appeals board to plead our case and to demonstrate some findings that we believe are reasons why this denial for the variance application is not correct or in our opinion. What I did is, on part of the appeals letter that was submitted, actually, we went through each individual findings that the planning commission had stated in their report, and wanted to just go through those to basically explain reasons why those are not valid or they're unfounded. And one of the things that one of the commissioners, city council, excuse me, planning commissioners mentioned that basically thought that this variance was too large and too close to the setback or not enough setback. And so after that, we started doing some research and found out there were two examples just right down the street from Iron Trail where a variance was actually granted, and those I put in the notes, and that is the Super One, when they did the addition to the south, they actually was granted a variance to put their addition, south addition, right on the property line. And in fact, as a result of that, there is a step, a concrete step, as well as an overhang for, I think it's probably like a bank drop or something, that is actually extends into the right-of-way by seven feet. Plus, they also built a drive aisle in the right-of-way on the curb. So that is something obviously is much greater than what was requested, is being requested by Iron Trail. And then also, just to the east of that, the Super One Liquor Store, we found that a variance was granted to build it five feet from the highway right-of-way, which is within the setback requirements. And so there's just two examples, and that one there probably is a little different because I don't really understand why a variance was given when that was a brand-new site. It wasn't an addition. I can see, you know, the Super One addition to the grocery store was granted, but the liquor store, that's a totally new site, and there could have been options given on there. Which then leads me back to the next one, is talk about the alternative sites that the planning commission said that Iron Trail should look at. There really isn't any, it has to do, the location of the proposed addition to the Chevrolet showroom is based on the sanitary sewer, which extends down 13th, and there's really no option because of the shallowness of that sanitary sewer, no other options on the site. And having an off-site car wash defeats the purpose of having a car wash because it's going to actually add additional traffic to and from the site, plus by the time you get done, in the winter time, by the time you get done with your washing your service customers' cars, they're dirty, you know, when you come back to the dealership. And it's also virtually impossible to monitor and control. So from that standpoint, those are not valid reasons that it should have been denied. And then the other item was the neighborhood objections, and I kind of want to go through some of those. They had to do with noise, also traffic, and then also the nobody stopping at the stop sign and all the speed bump. Did an analysis, actually did a decibel reading on August 1st, and the read, right there on, excuse me, 17th Street, and the current decibel readings was fifty-eight to sixty-five decibels, and that was primarily taken when vehicles were driving to and from Menards. The Virginia, or excuse me, the Iron Trail entrance does not even extend that far to the west. And so it was strictly Menards traffic. And another thing that pointed out is that the business hours, the hours of operation that Menards is open, they're open at like six o'clock in the morning, and they don't close till nine. Where Iron Trail, they open at eight o'clock and close at five. So there's quite a disparity as far as the traffic, and so the traffic is primarily coming to and from Menards and has nothing to do with Iron Trail. And then also, one of the complaints, objection was, is that there was this bump on 17th, and when pickups or with trailers go over that one, they're going to Menards, there's all this banging going on. And that has to do, has nothing to do with the sanitary sewer. It has to do with the storm sewer, the city storm sewer that is in the street there in that location. So that really is nothing of being caused by adding a car wash or adding this addition to the Chevrolet building. And then also the fact that, you know, people going to Menards to and from Menards don't stop at the stop sign, that's totally out of control of Iron Trail. And so really, those two last ones really have no relevance whatsoever as far as this project as it goes. Another item that was brought up was the drainage. I think you alluded a little bit about on the drainage and the snow storage. Iron Trail, there is a, their parking lot curb, which is on the north side of 17, is going to remain as-is. That is not changing. That is currently on the property line. So all the green space between the 17th, the curb on 17th, and the curb on the display lot is going to remain the same. And the addition actually is hard surface, and it's going to go on a parking area, so there's not going to be any increase in runoff on the site because it's all hard surface. And it goes into the storm sewer, there's an existing storm sewer. On 17th, actually, it extends into Iron Trail, and that's where the water be collected. So there will be no changes whatsoever to the drainage or snow storage on 17th. Also during the planning commission findings, actually, Mr. Sullivan had provided some illustrations showing what the dimensions were, what this addition would be from or to the adjoining property, and he'd indicated that those were residents, which indicated that it was actually the dwelling portion of a resident. But in fact, those dimensions were all taken from the adjacent owners' garages, because all those houses, I think, except for ones on 13th, and the other ones are on 18th. So all the residences face on the other side of, you know, the other street where, going back to Superior One, those houses on 17th on the south side, they all do face to the north. So there's totally difference in that as well. And we provided some exhibits on that as far as some photographs going back to the Super One. We took a photograph, looking down the street, and we superimposed where the property line was. That's this one right here, showing that basically the property line is, excuse me, the building is right on the property line, and that the roof canopy extends as well as the street, or excuse me, stairs extends into the street right-of-way. Then also, I brought this along as well and gave you, that's actually a larger one, just wanted to make sure they had a larger one, but it actually shows the dimensions. We had Benchmark Engineering, who has a representative here, in case you have any questions with him, showing as far as the Super One, basically it's in, within one foot, it's point-two to point-five feet from the property line, and that the roof overhang extends seven feet into the right-of-way. And then the other, going back as far as just the, got this off of the county website, showing how close the liquor store is to the property line, and what was shown, or was in the city records is that it's five feet from the property line. I also included, and some of this stuff probably we won't go into, but I also included, I'd requested from the city as far as any documentation of the variance request for Super One, both the addition and then also the liquor store. And this actually is a copy, I think I received it right after we had submitted the letter or the day after, so I wasn't able to put that in there. But one of the things that is kind of interesting, just going through that, is one of the reasons why they decided to make a decision, the planning commission decided a decision to approve the thirty-foot variance is that because it's, the adjoining property is a city right-of-way. Well, that's the same situation that we have on ours. And I just thought that that was rather interesting, because in this case, they said that, you know, they approved it to be right on the property line, but then in Iron Trail Motors' case, they said it's too close to the right-of-way. So, you know, obviously, Iron Trail wasn't treated, you know, the same as Super One in their request. And then also on the liquor store, there was really nothing that was, they had any issues with, they just granted it, and the reason was that they needed it due to parking needs. Well, you know, there's different ways you can configure a site, and I'm not going to go back into as far as what the decisions were made it that way, but you could get basically the building setback and have parking on the north side and still have the same number of parking spaces. So I don't know as far as what the, how the decision was made, but obviously, these are two cases just down the street that variances were granted in similar or even worse, as far as, not worse, but greater variance requests than Iron Trails. And then I think a couple other things during the city council member, someone here had made a request regarding the sanitary sewer and its condition. We did have it camered and videoed, and it is in fair to good condition. There's a combination of some cast iron as well as some PVC piping. It's a six-inch line, which is more than adequate for the additional. This car wash will generate wastewater of six gallons a minute when it's in operation, because each cycle is a three-minute cycle, and it uses eighteen gallons. So I just do the math, and it's six gallons. Put that in comparison, if you take your garden hose, turn it on, if you've got a half-inch garden hose, and you turn that on, you're going to get about, to full, you're going to get like seven and a half gallons per minute. So it's even less than turning on your garden hose. So that the six-inch pipe is more than adequate to accommodate the additional water. And as is stated before during the meeting, the car wash will have a sand interceptor, so all debris, all dirt, all sand, gravel will be collected inside the car wash and will not be discharged into the sanitary sewer. That is a mechanical code requirement by the state of Minnesota. So with all that, and one of the things we just wanted to make, you know, what our appeal is that Iron Trail just wants to be treated like other businesses. There was one statement made by the, one of the planning commissioners that, you know, if there was three hundred jobs, then maybe it'd be a different situation. Well, Iron Trail employs a lot of people, and they've been here for a long time. There's going to be some additional jobs created in this as well, but I think the bottom line is, is that, you know, I think the business community wants to make sure that they're being treated fairly, you know, by the city and not picking and choosing which ones win and which ones lose. So based on that is, I don't know if you have any questions of me, but that is the reasoning that we believe that the denial was not right. It was unfair to Iron Trail and requesting the appeal.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lindahl. We'll move around the room to the rest of the council, and then I might have, I have a question or two. Councilor Johnson?
Thank you. So I want to make sure we're clear on a few things. The variance to Miners, Inc. was issued in 2004. You agree with that? I mean, that's...
I believe it. That's what it was said.
A lot has changed in our city since 2004, so I'll just start with that. The variance in 2004 was an addition to an existing building. This is...
An addition to...
A variance, no.
Okay.
A variance for building a new car wash along the southern edge of the property. That's different. I'm just going to go through my notes here. So it's a, now, the variance for the liquor store was a new build with a variance from the north side of the property. So there is a difference there. They're not, we can't compare them. You're asking to build a new building on the south side of a property. The one was an addition, the other one was new construction that was given a variance to the north on the property. Your analogy to a garden hose doesn't run, work for me, because you run a garden hose for a few minutes, not all day long. So if someone's running their garden hose and it goes into the sanitary sewer, it's going to be for a short period of time. It's not going to be all day long, every three minutes moving forward. A question I, who is the professional that determined that our six, who in the city determined that the six-inch sanitary line was fine?
Well, past experience on car washes and all we do is automotive.
So my question to you is, who in the city determined the six-inch line is fine?
Well, we haven't gotten that far yet as far as...
I have concerns about the chemical mitigation from the car wash. What is in place to prevent all the soap and chemicals being used on the cars from going into the sanitary sewer and killing our bugs at the processing plant?
All the chemicals have to be approved by the state of Minnesota.
But that doesn't answer my question. What mitigates them as they go through our process from, to not clean or...
Well, I mean, that's, I mean, you look at from standpoint, you even, you ask the same questions regarding residents, when you do your laundry and there's soap that goes in there, what do they do?
I'm not doing loads of laundry from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. every day, seven, six days a week.
Well, you don't do it, it's not 6:00 a.m. to 9:00, it's actually 8:00 to 5:00.
Thank you for taking my point. I appreciate that. When you say this space is the only place that's viable, can you explain why nothing else on that property is viable?
Because of the depth of the existing sanitary sewer.
And how does that connect to the city? Why is that the city's problem?
I think they went as deep as they could, that's because it connects actually to 18th. There is no utilities in 17th, so the only opportunity is to go to 18th, and that is basically at the depth that the sanitary sewer is on 18th, so there's no other option.
Where does the sewer connect from the Bain Building, the big building?
Comes straight out to the south.
I guess, I'm trying to process, and thank you, Britt, for putting this up, why Iron Trail Motors can't run a pipe from anywhere else under their parking lot to connect to the sewer?
Because of the depth, if you have to put it at a certain slope, you can't get to any depth, because when the Chevrolet showroom was built, they connected to the existing sanitary sewer, which is just to the south of the Toyota's building, and they, where that was at is where they had to connect it. They couldn't drop it any further than that, and that was all based on where the sanitary sewer connects on 18th. So there is no options.
So I guess my point is, is there's no maybe cost-effective options for your company to do this? Or is there just no option? I guess my point is that there's another business to the east that has obviously a sewer that runs out. All those other, everybody does. So I just want to clarify that, that your company could invest the money in creating a system that would work if they so chose.
Well, if you're referring to the Kentucky Fried Chicken to the east, that goes out on the 12th.
Okay.
So that is probably, as far as the distance, going from there all the way to 12th, there's nothing to the north. So, you know, you would have to go and get an easement from Kentucky Fried Chicken, but I don't even, we don't even know what the depth of that is, because obviously, we're just basing everything on what is available on the site currently.
And then I have questions about the existing, Chevrolet building's a small one, correct?
Yes.
Okay. There is electrical and gas lines running into the rear of that building.
Correct.
How, where does this new building go with those?
They would all have to be upgraded because of the car wash requirements.
And I guess that would be my point moving forward with the sewer. The sewer probably would need to be upgraded.
No, actually, the sewer is actually on the north, on the south side. It comes out at the south side, so that's actually where the car wash would be, and I want to just correct it, that this is a car wash, but it's not an independent building. It's actually going to be connected to the Chevrolet showroom. It's physical. If you look at the previous supplemental, it was connected to the existing showroom, so it's not a separate building. But to get to your point, the sanitary sewer for the Chevrolet building comes out the south, it turns and goes to the east, and that's where the car wash will be. And so inside the car wash is where the connection would be from the existing Chevrolet to the car wash. And again, I reiterate that that is an addition, it's not a standalone building.
I would like to see from our staff if our, if the sewers can handle that addition, because it's more than just once or twice every so often. Your explanation was that, that the car wash, the idea is that the car wash is going to save in the winter time and driving, and that's fine, but the water's flow is going to be somewhat continuous throughout the day. And I just want to make sure, from our point of view, that it is something that this sewer can handle, that all the pipes from there all the way down to the, to the processing system will work. We are struggling with some other businesses because of the way things have always been, and I just want to make sure we're getting it right. And I'll just reiterate my point, your request for a new car wash, it doesn't say in addition to, at least in what I'm reading here, and again, the comparing to Super One, that was an addition to a building that was already there, it...
Well, I think what we had, we mentioned car wash, we didn't actually say it was a new building. And by the... And by the, by the documents that were shown-
A variance for a, building a new car wash along the southern edge of the property. It does not say an addition to the existing building for a car wash.
Okay.
Thank you.
By the documents that were submitted, it clearly shows that it's an addition. It's not a freestanding building.
All right. Thank you, Councilor Johnson. Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anyone here that can, so having this up is very helpful to me. Can we shrink it down a little bit, Britt? And I want to focus to the east, excuse me, to the west side. Keep, I guess, going down, minimize it a little bit more. Oh, that might be hard to see. Okay, but going off toward the Menards side, I don't know what that road is called that's heading north-south. If you take a right at that stop sign on the edge of the properly, property line there. But Menards, where does Menards sewer run? Does it go south to 18th, 18th Street South as well on, on that Menards side? So what my question, I guess, is can anyone outline where there is another sewer system north of the 17th Street property lines? Is there any, do we have anyone from the city that can tell us where those sewer lines are street and alley?
If I could answer that question, if you scroll up so that you actually show 18th Street, that cul-de-sac right there you see?
Yep.
That's where Menards utilities are connected to.
So if there's any backup that's happening or would happen, it's going to impact and affect that 18th Street South portion? If there's any sewer issues, would that be a safe or fair assumption? Not, not saying with the new, I'm just saying with any issues, any, if that's where it's all tying in, in theory, if there was any problems, it's going to be right at that site?
Well, I guess, any one of the residents or any of the businesses that connect to it, you know, there could potentially be. But from the standpoint of obviously the usage, you know, one of the things that this addition's going to be doing is it's going to take out the hand washing operation that's currently in the dealership and put it into this building. So, you know, when you look at a comparison as far as how much additional from the whole site, it's probably negligible. I mean, I just explained as far as that, from the standpoint of the car wash, that's what it use. Now, how much as far as to go back and try to calculate, you know, how much they use when they hand wash the car, you know, again, it's probably negligible.
I guess, thank you for that. And where I guess where I'm coming from is how many utilities are, or connections, I shouldn't say utilities, I should say sewer connections are connected at that one spot? I don't know if anyone from planning and zoning would know that. My concern is, is that the only spot if Kentucky Fried Chicken is also? I mean, that's a, that's a fair angle distance, and that's under the, under the property owners or homeowners' property. Is, am I safe to assume that? And I don't, I don't necessarily need you to answer that. I just want someone maybe from our, from the city's perspective or planning and zoning to give me that factual statement, if anyone can.
Would.
Planning and zoning or city staff. You guys don't, wouldn't have that. Okay. So is there, is there someone in the city? Like, I don't know if Jim Ross that would know that or-
We, we did do, when we were looking at the utilities, we did do a search as far as what is available and actually what is, actually benchmark investigated that is that Kentucky Fried Chicken's utilities come off of 12th to the east. So there's, there is no utilities in 17th.
Okay. I just thought you had just said Kentucky Fried runs to 18th.
No, no, that runs, runs to 12th to the east.
Okay. I misunderstood that.
Yeah.
My point though in going forward is we're going to, if, say there's other potential development happening, I don't know if there's any even land there, but there are businesses out there. My concern is, do we even have enough storms with and breath to accommodate anything else coming forward? So I definitely have a concern about that, and I just wanted some of those questions answered. So you're, you're having, regardless, you'd have to come, regardless if it was located north on the property or all the way west and north corner or north, excuse me, the southwest corner, those utilities are, or the runoff is still going to enter the sewer and end up on 18th Street South.
Just to make sure that you're talking about storm sewer or sanitary?
Well, you, both. I mean, your sanitary is, I think-
Right, right. Sanitary actually goes down 13th and connects to the main that is in 18th, and that's the one that Menards is connected to. And there is nothing as far as sanitary in 17th. The storm, actually, there is in seven, or excuse me, is in 17th. There's a catch basin just to the south of the Chevy building, and that's where probably the south half of, of the Iron Trail lot drains too, okay? And on the south side of the Chevrolet showroom, where the car wash addition is going to be connected, that's all hard surface, okay? So that actually currently goes into the storm sewer. And basically, we would take the roof drainage, we'd have to combine the Chevrolet showroom and the car wash additions roof and connect it to the existing storm, but there would not be any net gain of storm sewer.
And I can appreciate what you're saying. I know we haven't heard from other people that would like to come forward and speak. What I'm trying to ascertain and according to the Planning and Zoning Commission, that they had asked to explore maybe several alternative spots on your existing property. So when I'm looking at your existing property, what I'm thinking to myself is, is there any other viable options in order to appease both parties? If you can understand where I'm coming from with noise, with water, but regardless, it's still going to end up, the sanitary sewer is still going to end up on 18th Street South in that cul-de-sac, regardless of where the car wash would be located.
Right, right. As far as that, that's the only, the sanitary sewer service to the entire Iron Trail site comes up 13th, and that's the only thing that's available. And so no matter where you probably put it on the site, and the reason why this is the only viable location on the site is because of the depth of the sanitary sewer in 18th, and in order to get the minimum slope going into Iron Trail, the depth, basically just to the south of Iron Trail, if you were to draw a line from, you know, the showroom of, of the Toyota building and the Chevrolet building, at that intersection is where there's a manhole. And that's four and a half feet deep. In fact, and so you can't, there's, I mean, we're at minimum right there.
So, and that's what I'm trying to understand. So if we go, just pick the southwest corner, it, it closer, well, you, you'd have to go in a little bit, but you want to, you know, go down, parallel down, or you'd have to angle a little bit to get to, it'd be closer, but there's no system there, there's no manhole there, there's nothing there.
Right. There's, there's nothing, nothing there. And, and so really the only, 13th is the only option because, you know, you start, yeah, there's just nothing there and-
And could that be something that could be investigated? In appeasing and making-
Well-
Win-win for everyone?
I don't know where, I mean, now, now you're, since there's nothing there and there's no public right of way, you know, to get to 18th, you know, I don't, I don't know what, if there's any viability to that at all.
And maybe that's something that could be explored. I'm just, I'm, I'm coming from a position of trying to appease both parties where, where Iron Trail could facilitate the car wash and the people that are concerned in the neighborhood would have, would have their-
Well, I think-
They haven't been able to come up and speak yet, so I really want to hear from-
Right, right.
People that want to speak, but I'm trying to explain to you where I'm coming from.
I think probably what I'd like to do is defer that answer to, to Brian, who was the general manager at the store, because obviously that's from an operational standpoint and even financial and all that. So I would defer that answer on, so Brian.
And I think before that, I don't know, Mayor, I don't know if other people want to speak, but I mean, I, for me, that's where I'm coming from. I'm trying to come at this situation to find if we can come to some sort of a middle ground into an agreement where all parties can be satisfied, and that's where I'm coming from. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Paulson. I think that we're hearing from the presentation by the appellant in this case is, which is Virginia, I don't know, Iron Trail Moore. So once we get all the answers, questions asked and answered, and there's some that has to be asked of, of planning and zoning from my perspective and from our court officials that are in the back and from benchmarking, I mean, there's a lot of questions to ask about the presentation made by the appellant, and, and thanks you for the patience for those who want to speak in, in opposition of it. But I think we're supposed to continue on with that moving forward and try to look at all the options that could be available or may not be available based upon the plans that the appellant is looking to, to get approved today. So any other questions at this point in time, Councilor Paulson?
No, I have no further questions.
Thank you. Councilor Bearbo.
I just have a couple of questions here. What I'm seeing on the map up there now, is that the proposed doubling up of the building that's currently the General Motors one, or is that just the General Motors building that I'm seeing there right now? And the addition would go to the west, correct?
No, the addition would go to the south. That is the existing building showing that area.
So you're going to pick up all that, all the way to the curb then?
Well, to the, the display lot curb, there, you can see that there's a couple of vehicles parked on the south side of the Chevrolet building.
That building's only going to be 17, 18 feet wide then? Is that what you're saying?
Well, actually, the addition will be 17, 18 feet wide, right.
Okay. So, does anybody know what the size of the Menards sanitary is? If the building's going to the west, you came across diagonally to the Menards sanitary, what size is that sanitary? Does anybody know if it's eight inch, six inch? It's newer.
Sure what that is.
It's much newer. Is that, Menards hasn't been there that long, and that, and that would be another direction. Does anybody know?
That, but-
What that size of that is? You'd be going the, basically, almost the same distance if you were to come out the west end of the new building versus the east end of the current building to go to, that's already going down to 13th, correct?
Right. So, so- So the, the problem would be is like, I guess, you know, not knowing the depths of that, but obviously the cul-de-sac is at the high point of the sanitary sewer because that flows to the east. So, you know, by moving that and trying to still come across, you're, you're kind of fighting your grades and-
But nobody knows how deep that Menards sanitary is. Does anybody know that?
Well, it's got to be, because where Iron Trail comes into it, it's got to be higher at Menards, at the cul-de-sac than it is on 13th, just because of the flow of the storm sewer main or sanitary sewer main.
That's just a question because I don't know what town is. I knew the one coming out of Iron Trail was six inches, and that's been a concern in the winter months and other months for the residents, but that's neither here nor there. Let them speak on that. But is that white line the sanitary system or does that go right into the cul-de-sac there?
That's their shed, I think they've got to lean to where they, or lumber materials.
The white line coming down from 17th.
Yeah, that kind of Z shape or inverse.
Yeah, so the, so the sanitary comes straight into that cul-de-sac, I'm guessing that's 18th Street. That's the one we had all the trouble with way back. So, I don't know, it's catch 22, I guess. That's all I have to say right now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Bearbo. Anyone else right now? I have a couple of questions, if I may, if I may please. First of all, so you're asking for a variance of how, how much?
It was 2.7, I believe, the setback.
Set, you, you want the setback to be 2.7 feet?
Correct.
And the setback that's normally without the variance is how much? Five feet?
Thirty.
Thirty feet, right? So it's 25, well, 27 feet, right?
Twenty-six and a half, somewhere around there.
Okay, 30 feet. So the question for me is that, looking at some of the other buildings in town, and you can say if there's a new building or an old building or whatever the case may be, the request that this is to put a building up there, whether it's standalone or attached as you indicated, and you're looking for a 2.7-foot setback on the 30-foot, so, okay. So my question maybe to someone from planning and zoning, if you would answer this for me. Have you any time approved, and this is for the public certification because I probably know the answer to this, but I want to make sure, come in from planning and zoning, that, so have you, we ever approved in a commercial or residential property a setback that close? Have we had zero-foot setbacks before, one-foot setbacks before, two-foot setbacks before in the city of Virginia? Ms. McReynolds, please. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
As we look at variance requests, we use the precedence of the code, and then whatever evidence comes in that's specific to that variance request. We don't generally, as we're looking at them at the time, compare them to other applications or approvals or denials that have had, happened in the past. So it's on an individual basis.
So I think you answered partially my question, Ms. McReynolds. So it depends upon the circumstances of whether or not there's opposition to this, whether or not the location, whatever the case may be, you as planning and zoning, take a look at on a case-by-case basis based upon where it's located, determining whether or not, and what kind of adverse effects are. And part of that, your, your reason for your denial is listed in here, the variance is too large, okay, and too close and not setback enough. So in this particular case, the determination made by planning and zoning is that it's not setback enough.
Correct.
So I, so I would like a little explanation for that. And then an alternative site on the existing property in the vicinity or better options should be explored. And I believe if you had any information on what better options that might be available based upon the presentation today by Virginia, or by the Iron Trail Motors for, they've explained there is no, their perspective is, their position is that there is no other alternative. This is the best alternative they have in order to access the necessary city utilities to accommodate the building of this car wash. And then, of course, the neighborhood objections is another, another factor. And then you said drainage and stone, storage issues is a problem with this proposal. So I think we all would like to know what drainage and storage issues are there. I know that you had somebody from, representative from our, our parking, our, our public works director was probably there as well. So if you could answer those questions for me, I, it would clarify things more for me.
Okay. It wasn't in the findings, but if you look further in the minutes of the meeting where this request was acted upon.
I read through it.
We also requested that Mr. Sullivan confer with, with the city administrator about finding infrastructure funding to help Iron Trail possibly get, get utilities off of 12th Avenue or explore other places on the site. In conferring with Britt, that a meeting did happen, but I don't know the outcome of that meeting. So that was something, you know, we did want to help them find an alternative site on their property for, for the car wash. There was significant neighborhood objections, both from a noise standpoint and other issues as well. Looking at the minutes from the 2004 decision for Miners- Looking at the, the minutes from the 2004 decision for minors, there was one, in the minutes, there was one neighbor who didn't have objections to the setback or the, the building extension, but his objections were to on-street parking and trash. And at the time, in the, in the minutes, minors seemed to be very, worked very hard to ameliorate any of the, the problems that the neighbors had. So, I, I was not on the commission at that time, but they did make the decision to allow that variance for the liquor store. Concerns were about the building being too close to the residential street. And so, the setback on the north side of the property was to get the building as far away from the residence as possible, plus park, allowable, allowable parking spaces. So, those, those were why those decisions were made.
Oh, thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it. And what I would like to do, maybe ask Mr. Bird, who's been on the commission for many, many years, and thank you for serving. When Waschke built their car wash for the general, for their GM site, and they build a car wash, and it's not close to the road, but there's a setback requirement, and they're, and they're really close to the neighbors as well. Do you recall any adverse concerns about the, the closest of that car wash to the, to the dead-end street and to the, and to the houses that are really close by there? Do you, do you recall anything of that, Mr. Bird?
No.
If you could come up, please, thank you.
For that particular car wash, Ken Waschke was actually here, and we discussed the noise issues and things like that. And somewhat like Iron Trail's present plan, the blowers and that would be enclosed. And then, they had a detailing part after that. I'm sure you've all have been in the car wash there.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there was not one person, as I recall. Now, again, that's, you know, sometimes I don't remember yesterday, but anyway, yeah, there was no, there was no people from the community there, none whatsoever. And it was set in, and it's kind of in a, kind of a desolate area there, I mean, where it's located. There's not like numerous houses right across. There might be one or two on the end of the block there.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, it was, it was approved, and I haven't had any complaints or I haven't heard of any since then.
Okay, uh, thank you. I appreciate that. I just wanted to know so that wherever this goes, whatever issue we make either now within the, we have third days to make this decision, that we have all the information that we have. And I think we're probably gonna have to explore this even further by getting the information that Councilor Paulson and, and, and Councilor Birbou had, had requested about the sanitary sewer and the drainage, drainage and all those kind of things. But for me, is that, so it's a two-fourth, a setback, and I know that, I know it's a kind of case-by-case basis, and I know traditionally, the city council has, you know, I don't want to use a rubber, rubber stamp, that's not the case, but you know, the commissioner's do, has done the yeoman's work and made a recommendation, went out and inspected, did all that kind of stuff, cleared all the testimony, and then made a decision to recommend what they felt was best for the city of Virginia. And most of the time, we, we agree with the findings of the, of the commission, and then we, we take action. There have been times where we haven't, and I'm gonna give you an example. I know this isn't comparing apples to apples, but I use an example as a comparison purposes. On Eleventh Street South and the 100 block, in the alley, there were a bunch of garages. And these are garages were right on the property line. There was another person who, who wanted to build a garage on that property line, and that variance was, that request was denied because it was right on the property line.
Correct.
Well, because all the other garages were on the property line, the city council, in a rare instance, overturned that and gave a, a variance for that person to build a garage. So, all the garages are even. And I want to make that comparison, since when you look at, you know, I think Councilor Johnson alluded to, things have changed since 2004, since 2012. You know, there's a different change in the way we do things, but I don't think that our planning and zoning rules and regulations have changed at all apart from setback requirements and those kind of things. So, working on that on a case-by-case basis, we rely on the decisions made by the planning and zoning recommendations moving forward. Thus, the reason, hence the reason for this hearing. So, Mr. Bird, while I have you here, and I, and Ms. McReynolds, and if we, you made the recommendation not to, based upon the information in the text that you had on your reasonings for it, but in your, in your final synopsis, those are the four billeted points that, that you used for a reason for the denial, with the addition of the request for meeting with the city of Virginia, see if there comes some other funding sources that are available to help with some economic development to allow Iron Trail Motors to build their car wash elsewhere. They've chosen not to, they've chosen this is a site they want to build on based on their business model, and so this, that's why you're here as the appellant in this case. So, the variance is too large, so it's, goes from thirty feet down to two point seven, and you felt that was too, too, too far. And then, an alternative site in the existing property is a better option, should be explored, and that's based on the text about meeting with the city, trying to find some funding sources to help them put it in another spot, although Iron Trail has indicated that there really isn't another spot for them to put their cars, or they wish to put their car wash in. And then, and then, even though there is space available, it's just a matter of what decision you make in that regard. And then, the neighborhood, neighborhood objections, which we're gonna hear from you shortly here. And then, the drainage and snow issues, which is a problem with this proposal, that's why I'd like to know and get an answer to that with the other counselors. What is the drainage and snow removal issues with respect to this? But, you know, it's, it's, it's a delicate balance between business expansion and opportunities to compete with other businesses of like nature in, in the city, as between Waschke and Iron Trail with the car wash. And then, of course, you balance that with the, the, the variance request and the closeness to the residents over there on Seventeenth Street in that regard too. So, we have to make that decision moving forward. So, is there anything else, Mr. Bird, that you would like to disseminate to us as, to stand by the decision to deny this, this variance?
One thing I'd like to bring up, Larry, you spoke about this garage, and not to get away from the present issue.
No, I use it as an example, please.
But, you know, being on this commission, this is my third decade on it.
Mm-hmm.
And I remember that particular one. And people think of zoning, but I think the commissioners understand this, but I don't think the city council understands that we are so, we are planning. And, and the reason that was denied is your great-grandchildren, or Julian's great-grandchildren, they may see where all them garages, as they're rebuilt, they're back the five feet. Now, you talk to your city plow operators, your utility people, the garbage guys, you ask them when they hit a block like that, what they think. How many times have garage doors been pushed in with snow? So, again, I, I, I remember that distinctly, because that was one of the few times you guys went the other way.
Mm-hmm.
But that is, you have to look ahead. And just like here, and we see this all the time, well, Jesus, so-and-so down the block, he got to do it, why can't I? And until you see all the details and the reasons why, and I think the planning and zoning, it is evolving, something Stephen brought up over time, or was it Julian? I guess, anyway, we are evolving over time, and trying to get that, to get people back into where things should be. You know, you're talking, you look at this now, yeah, you can go down and look at Super One, and it's close there, but there wasn't much neighbor complaint. There was, you know, it's not a, there was no noise factor, there was not much traffic issues with it. And, you know, we just felt that, at that time, I was on the commission at that time, that it was, you know, they got whatever, a couple hundred people working there and stuff, and you got to look at that part of it too. I've always said, all the years I've been on here, if you do what's best for the city of Virginia as a whole, you're never gonna screw up know-how. And the city as a whole is, you have to represent the people, the people that live in the houses. You know, Carl, you live in a house, all this stuff, you want this next to you. And, yeah, sure, it's gonna be a little tax-based for the city. Maybe there's gonna be one job in there, I don't know if they're gonna do some detailing, but it's, it was, it was a tough one for us to approve. And it's a twenty-seven and a half foot variance. You can look in our records, I don't think you'll find too many of them. In fact, maybe just the one, Super One. But, but, but we look at this stuff, like the liquor store was pushed, Super One Liquor was pushed towards the highway, kind of keep it away from residential. Another one I can think of is Range Mental Health, you got the Donovan Frank next to it. The whole neighborhood was in here, this place was packed. Yeah, we don't want all these people walking through our yards and all these lowlifes and, and, you know, excuse my language, but that's what came out. So, we had it pushed back. And I've never, I've no, I've got three friends that live on that block, and there hasn't been one complaint. So, I, I mean, these are things we look at it, and we as a commission do our due diligence. We go down there, and I'm sure you guys and gals, you've all been down there, we, we talk to the residents. You know, what do you think? And, and nobody wants anything built next to them. I get that. We all want to be on our own little island and just leave me alone, but again, if you look at what's best for the city, I, I think that's, it's something worth thinking about. But, you know, I don't know, I just looking if I had anything else here. But again, you know, if you look down the line, if, if we keep building fences and stuff where they are, we had another issue. And again, a little bit off the subject, down on, that was south side, anyway, fence. And I'm told it was approved by city council. Well, then it came to us, and the guy had to show up, and, and he wanted to put it right back where the fence was. Well, yeah, that makes sense. You had a fence there for a hundred years, I want to put it back there. But again, it's not in the eight feet, it's not in the five feet. The idea is to come into compliance over time. Guy tears down his garage, wants to put a new one on the slab, the slab is just far from the alley. We don't approve that. We make them move it back. And I believe that's the right way to go. And if it's not, well, I'm sure there'll be a change in the commission. I can't, I can't live forever, so it'll be somebody else on here sooner.
Uh, Mr. Bird, I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Right.
Thank you. Okay, anything else at this point in time from the appellant, Iron Trail? If you please come forward, and then, please state your name for the record, sir, and welcome to the public hearing.
Uh, Brian Shack, I'm the general manager at Iron Trail Motors. So, obviously Darwin's got all the detailed information, but a few things I'd like to address. There was something, a comment made that the car wash is gonna be continuous, and that's actually not the fact. From the hours of eight AM to five PM, you've got about 540 minutes. That would give you 180 car washes a day, at three minutes of car wash. And we're not asking for that, we're not looking for that. We, if we wanted to, we couldn't do 180 car washes a day. It's, this car wash is not gonna be open to the public, it's gonna be a car wash that's used to enhance our business and our services to the public and to the public in the, in the city of Virginia and surrounding areas. So, we're looking at thirty to thirty-five car washes a day, which is about 180 minutes. So, this is not a continuous flow of water. Additionally, we have moved our recon department out of the Iron Trail Motors facility, we were washing cars there every day, all day long, and the car wash is a much more efficient use of water. So, when we talk about what the sewer can handle, by moving that car wa, by moving our, our existing recon facility off-site, we're no longer washing cars on a daily basis at Iron Trail Motors. We've greatly reduced our water usage and water discharge there. That water discharge, when you have somebody on a pressure washer washing a car, it takes a lot longer than three minutes, and you have a lot more water than what this car wash is gonna discharge. So, we've already reduced our usage, and the proposed usage is not going to equal what our previous water discharge was. So, car wash is very efficient. When you look at the map, and today, unfortunately, we're in a COVID situation where supply chains have been disrupted, but we've got a lot of cars in the lot. And our current inventory situation is not gonna stay the way it's been, and we're gonna have a lot of cars again. In fact, one of the reasons for moving the recon department off-site was because we did not have enough lot space. So, there's two reasons for why this is the only viable place on the, on our property for a car wash. Number one is because the city sewer is, the, the elevation of the sewer is so high that we can't locate it somewhere else. If we do that, the pipe is gonna be so high in the ground, it's gonna freeze in the wintertime. And so, the, the Chevy building is as shallow as it can go. As a matter of fact, on that sewer system, we had to put a substantial amount of foam above that to keep the frost from going into the ground, because that existing line is as shallow as it can go. So, adjoining the car wash and, and making that addition on the Chevy building to put a car wash there means it's minimal impact to the sewer on our facility. We, that's the only spot that works for the depth of sewer drainage. And you have to have the proper slopes for that water to run downhill and, and run into the city sewer. The next thing, inventory-wise, there's really no room. You can see it right there, we've got cars everywhere. And the only additional space you can see is to the north of the Chevy building, right where it says 1301 Seventeenth Street. That's customer parking, customer parking down the side, that's customer parking in front of the Toyota building. Anybody that's been by our lot can see that the side of that is always full with cars for service. The, the lot that is to the, the east between Iron Trail and Kentucky Fried Chicken is full of service cars and employee vehicles. So, by locating the car wash at that site, it's the minimal amount of impact to the sewer system, it's also the minimal amount of impact to our lot space. Putting this building anywhere else as a standalone building would take a minimum of twenty parking spots, and as you can see with the inventory that's there, we don't have those twenty spots. Additionally, one of the reasons we moved recon, the recon building off-site is because of parking, and we've got an extra fifty spots at our new location to handle the overflow, because we simply don't have enough room to handle the, the vehicles that we need to park on that lot. So, snow has been brought up. The existing, the addition onto the Iron Trail Chevrolet building for a car wash is gonna be with the, within the existing paved parking lot space. And so, when we talk about a variance, that variance is gonna bring us to within two-point-seven feet of our curb on our parking lot. So, it's gonna stay well within our property lines. It's not gonna impact the stormwater sewer at all, there'll be no additional discharge. It will not impact any of the green space that you see there. So, as far as where snow goes, when the city plows, that snow comes up on that green space there, it does, it never comes into our parking lot, and so there'll be no impact on, on snow removal. I know neighbor objections have been brought up, and we've tried to be good neighbors by designing this building at additional expense to add no noise. Additionally, by putting this building in place, we don't have to go off-site to wash cars. It allows us to provide a better service for our customers. It also allows us to greatly reduce the traffic that we put on to Seventeenth Street. So, the neighbor concerns that have come through, you'll, you'll hear them here today, I'm sure they're gonna voice their opposition. There's two neighbors, that's it. They come up in pair, and they come up differently to look like there's actually four people, but it's really two properties that, that have the concern. It's really two properties that have the concern. And so, what we've done is, we've designed the facility to make sure that there's no additional noise impact, and also to make sure that it's on-site, so we reduce the impact of traffic on the street. If you take a look at the map there, it shows you where the property lines are, and all the houses that are there are located off Eighteenth Street, they're not off Seventeenth Street. And so, when John Sullivan made the measurements, he said we were seventy feet away from the existing residences. We're about 160 feet away from those residences. And between the car wash and the residences are garages, and if you take a look on the map, every single one of them's on the property line. So, what we're asking for is an unreasonable, we've tried to, tried to make this facility a zero-impact facility, which it is. As far as additional water usage, there will be none, because we've already moved our other operations off-site, and this is a much more efficient use of water, so there are less discharge. And then, the last thing I would say is, the Super One building has a thirty-foot variance, and they're right down the street from us. And the planning and zoning commission's reasons, the number one reason, if you look in your handout, that they approved the Super One variance is because it was similar to other B-one usage. So, by. So, by the council's own admission, they approved Super One because it was similar to other B1 zoning uses in the area, and we're B1. So, we respectfully asked the council that they'd vote to approve the car wash addition because of those different reasons. And if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shakt. Any questions or comments from the council? Thank you, any other?
We just want to be good partners and good partners with the city, so we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much. Okay. Any other questions, comments right now from, from the elected body, from the council here? Okay, we'd like to go to those neighbors who expressed opposition in the past, and last one now here, here at the public hearing, if, would you please come forward one at a time if you'd like to speak? But if you're speaking together, you won't, you know, a couple, please, you both come forward, and please state your name for the record and welcome to the public hearing, sir.
My name is Con Johnson, I live on Thirteenth Street, on the corner. We've talked about this before, but the location that they want to put the car wash, they talk about the sewer and the depth of the sewer, and I mentioned it before and it seems like it went over everybody's head, but there is such a thing, it's called a lift station. It's like a sump pump. And they put in sewer lines and stuff all over different cities, I've been familiar with it, they could locate their building on the north side, dig in a sewer line depth below frost, come up to where it hooks you into Eighteenth and put a lift station and put it up into the sewer. Shouldn't be a problem. No one wants to talk about that, you should look into it. Another thing I want to ask, these doors are supposed to be on this car wash, to take away all the noise from the blowers, which make a lot of noise. What's the decibel reading outside of those doors? No one's set, you know, they said we're going to put doors on it, so it won't be a problem. Prove that, where's the documentation? And the third thing I want to mention, you're talking about the sewer line from Menards, we've had trouble on Eighteenth there, we've had sewer line trouble there. And adding in more flow, it's been questioned, is that going to be a problem? The sewer lines are old and, you know, that could be an issue too, so, those are my questions. And I think that lift station for a sewer line, they could put that building anywhere on that property, run a sewer line over, put a lift station in into the existing line on Seventeenth, and it'd be no problem, so, you need to talk to somebody that knows about that stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to come up and speak? Thank you, would you please state your name for the record and welcome to the public hearing?
I'm Renee Lind, we're directly across the street, 1303. What more can we say? I still don't understand, I understand that the city is so into promoting business, I don't understand why this car wash will add anything to the actual business. There's car washes all over town, I would rather, when I bring my car in for a oil change, that I not have to wait two or three hours to get it back because somebody's running it through a car wash. Hand me a car wash slip, hand me a coupon for the Holiday Station or the, I don't even know what it's called anymore, it's still Lind's to me, or the one on Second Avenue or whatever. I don't understand how this adds to the business at all. And it, it just seems like it's a battle that just wants to be fought for no reason. There's plenty of places, on the north side of the building where the employees park, I don't know where it is exactly, if it's on the north side or if it's in that little zigzag there, there's cars all there, those are employees' cars. I mean, maybe they're too big for their britches there, maybe they need to move, maybe they need to go to the new place in Midway, whatever. Why keep building and building and building? And as far as comparing, we spent one whole summer trying to line our garage up with everybody else's on the street, and we did get the variance finally. We needed nine square feet variance, I think it was, at the time it was 1,000 square feet or something. We fought one whole summer here, two years later, those monstrous garages two blocks away went up, they're like 2,500 square feet or whatever they are. It happens. We fought fair and square, we won because we wanted to line up, and then the next time the other guys won, for whatever reason. But, that didn't affect me, their 2,000-square-foot garage didn't affect me, obviously the neighbors there, well, they were the neighbors, they built it across the alley. Whatever, this affects us, everything they do affects us. And, as you all know, the traffic there is atrocious, I don't know what's making our sewer lines break every time we turn around. We had to pay for ours out of pocket, the guy next door didn't have to, the gal next across the street didn't have to. But, she did hers twice, something keeps making those sewer lines break on our street. And, I don't know what their increase is going to do, I don't know. To me, it's ridiculous to pack that car wash into that little space, and I just can't believe, now, they're talking about spaces, all those cars you see there are going to have to be moved, somehow there's going to have to be entry and access there, to, there's cars right lined up in that space right now. And I don't know when these pictures were taken, I don't know, it's hard to tell how busy car lots are these days because they move them around so much to make them look like there's lots. But that's all I have to say, it's the same thing over and over and over and over and over with them, they haven't been good neighbors. We've tried, we haven't complained about them, you know, they've had variances before, we haven't shown up here, we don't care how high your stupid signs are, we didn't fight when they put that other building there. It just, there's got to be a limit, there's just got to be a limit at some point, I, I don't know. And I don't believe it's going to be quiet. Somehow, the doors are going to be opening and closing when the blowers are blowing and people are coming in, and I don't know. That's all I've got to say.
May I ask you one question, please, before you sit down? Thank you. So, when the, when the new Chevrolet garage was being built, the new, the new Chevy building, was that a significant problem for you, for the neighbors when they built that?
It was, was a problem because it prevented us from being snoopy anymore and seeing the highway, it blocked off our view of the highway, but we didn't, we didn't fight it, you know, I guess the explanation was there, whatever, but this is, this is just a bridge too far. And they've got that big sign up there, we, you know, we get letters all the time about stuff they're needing variances for or whatever, and we don't come here for every, every time we turn around. It's just too much.
Thank you.
Richard Lind, 1303 Eighteenth Street South. Been up here several times, and I'm sure Iron Trail is sick and tired of me, but...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lind.
Anyway, I just came up here to say that you guys know where I stand, and where the rest of my neighbors here stand. There might be only four people, but we are citizens of this city. We've tried to get along with that, what the manager said, and I've had a lot of complaints about their freight trucks parking right in front of my garage, and they know damn well that they're not supposed to be parking or unloading vehicles there, and they have been again, and they don't do a darn thing about it. So, I mean, this has nothing to do with the car wash, but I think the car wash could be very, very simplified by giving their customers coupons to the three car washes in the city of Virginia, and I'm sure they got people from Gilbert and Evolith and wherever buying their vehicles, and I'm sure they would be very, very happy with just a coupon where they can go, most of those coupons are good for 30 days, and they can, they can get them washed there, and it'd be a lot less headaches for them and a lot less headaches for me. So, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Lind.
Yep.
Okay, anybody else I'd like to speak? Okay, there's been a lot of, Mr. Bird, please come forward once again, Mr. Bird from our Planning and Zoning Commission.
Just had one quick thing to say, on the, when they built the Chevy building, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Toyota, Toyota came out with a, a thing that they had to be in a separate building. Well, if we didn't work with them and approve that, I believe they would have either lost the Chevy or the Toyota franchise. So, again, you know, what's best for us is, is people in town here. And the variance, I believe, I guess I don't remember from the last meeting, but it was, it was discussed. But that was, I mean, it's kind of a no-brainer, you can have them shut down because we won't let them put a building there. So, it's apples and oranges, that's all I wanted to clarify.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bird. Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor, I do have a question, this, so this is officially a public hearing, are any decisions or votes going to be cast during this meeting?
Just to get a clarification, we can do that at this meeting, but we have 30 days in which to contemplate and, and make a, make a vote and decision within, within a 30-day period, yes.
That's what I thought, okay, I just wanted clarification, so, just so, for the edification of the people that are here today and giving their time today. So, I'm hearing both sides or all three sides to this, to this issue, and I want to come from a position of trying to accommodate, but making maybe some concessions. And, so I don't know if Mr. Lindahl or Mr. Shakt, if you could help me, the, the location of the car wash proposed, because I, I don't have that document in front of me, I think you had provided that to us prior, but is it directly to the east, and then south to that curb?
Actually, if you look at, if, if you look at the left-hand side of the...
Yeah, if you could, hold on, let Councilor Johnson touch our city administrator's laptop.
It's basically going to be the, right there where the cursor is...
Can you blow that up?
Is...
Maybe?
Car wash would be lined up, it'd be the west, whoops, the west wall of the car wash would be in line with the west wall of the Chevy showroom, and then it would extend, I believe it's like 60 feet to the east. So it doesn't extend the entire length of that building, but it's only in the, the north...
And then how far down south?
It's basically right there, the curb, there's a curb line, it's just on the inside of that curb line.
Okay, and then the, the current utilization for that space, obviously you can't be using the, the grass space, the green space, or up to the curb, but how is that space being currently utilized, is it a drive, can you drive through or is it parking?
It's, it's actually...
Or is it like lot space?
It's just lot space, it's just, it was, when the Chevy showroom building was constructed, that was actually the, that curb line remained as it currently was, and, and the decision was is just to keep that, you know, as asphalt rather than green space on the south side. So, you know, they, that's a place where they couldn't store some vehicles if need be, but it's not intended to be any type of access, drive around the building.
So you're not having, seeing a traffic pattern driving through there or anything?
No, no.
Are your current customers utilizing parking there at all?
No, no.
So that's just specific lot space?
Right, right, yep.
Okay, thank you. Oh, thank you. Thank you, I appreciate that. So, I'm going to ask another question as long as you're still up here. And then I don't know if we can shrink that out, should I go to shrink it? Can I do it? So, Mr. Lindahl, if I look, then just stay on your west, west end, but to the north, where you obviously have stated that that's customer parking, could we, and haven't talked with Planning and Zoning, I'm talking about how could we figure out a compromise to make everybody happy, and if the city could, in fact, or potentially assist with some infrastructure dollars, could or would Iron Trail consider moving the car wash to the north if the variance was granted to the south, which is what you're requesting, and put that for your additional parking space that you would be losing if you moved the car wash to the north? That way, it would satisfy the neighbors, it would satisfy your need for the car wash, and, and you wouldn't, you would be getting the variant, I mean, I'm not saying that it would be granted, but it would be under a different circumstance coming forward to the Planning and Zoning Committee. And if the city were to find some infrastructure dollars, which is what the Planning and Zoning Committee apparently at some point recommended to our community development planner, John Sullivan, who's no longer here, and apparently a meeting had taken place, which I don't think any of us really knows the outcome of that meeting, but I'm, what I'm, I'm hearing everybody, and what I'm trying to understand is, can we come to some sort of a compromise that you want to utilize that space for a variance for the car wash? Could you move the car wash to the north, receive the variance to the south, but that would be for your customer parking that you would be losing, should you move the car wash to the, to the north?
If I, if I understand you...
Mary...
Mr. Shakt, did you want to come up and maybe answer Councilor Paulson's question, maybe better for the management team here?
It's, it's probably difficult to see, but the space that we want to utilize for the car wash is really difficult to park cars in, so we generally don't park vehicles there, it's used as some overflow, but it's, it's hard to get vehicles in and out of that space.
You mean on the, on the south?
On the south side, and, and that's why it is the best, it's, it's literally dead space on the lot, and it's the best space and the least impact. When you put a car wash in, you, you've got to have an approach, and you've got to have an exit, and putting the building in that location allows us an approach that is on our property, that doesn't impact any of the traffic or, or entrances on Seventeenth Street. It also allows us an exit to the west side of that building, which reduces the loss of parking spaces. And as I said, we, we're, we've been out of space until, until just recently, so, and we'll be out of space again.
And how, what is the feet, the foot distance from, on the green space there? What, what would you gain additional, I don't know if...
Well, we would be about...
Can I call on Mary McReynolds to come forward and help me answer this question, Mayor? If, if, if that's, if that's okay?
Yes, please.
I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Brian, I just...
I think all three of them will probably answer that question, Mary?
Thank you. If they moved the car wash anywhere else on the property, they wouldn't need the variance, first of all, even to utilize it for parking.
Even if we wanted to remove the green strip?
That's, that is city right-of-way, it's...
Okay, so that's a different type of a...
Right. Right, that, that, they wouldn't be able to go into the city right-of-way.
Okay.
So, where the pavement ends, I believe, I, I think you mentioned there's a curbs there, that's their property lot.
Where the pavement ends is the property lot? Okay, I appreciate that clarification. And go ahead, I, I didn't mean to cut you off.
So, that, that's no problem. So, we're gonna be eh, within our existing parking lot, and we're gonna be about 2.7 feet away from the edge of our own curb that is, uh, that is our property. So, we won't encroach at all into the green space. Um, like I said, that's, that's dead space to the south for us, which is why it makes sense, because as you can see, the lot is full. Um, to put it on the north side of the building would, uh, if you've been by there, would completely eliminate the Chevy entrance. We'd never be able to do that, Chevrolet would never approve that, and, and there's really, we'd have to completely redesign the Chevy building to get a new entrance and get a show floor there, so that, that wouldn't be a viable option.
Okay, and I, thank you both for walking me through that and, and to, you know, help me understand what options are. Um, is there any other viable opportunity that we could work together to look into, um, so that we can appease a wide variety?
Sure.
As a business owner, I, I get, you know, it's, it's adding an enhanced value to your business, so I understand fully why you would want to do this. Um, you know, it, it's an added expense to give people coupons to go, you know, this way you're taking the hit upfront, you're paying for the upfront cost to build with the assumption that, you know, it's not gonna cost you money, and at some point it's a net breakeven, well, you'll probably do some maintenance along the way, but, um, so I get where you're coming from, and I want to be supportive, but I also want to be supportive of the neighborhood and the community and the Planning and Zone, Zoning Commission, uh, and their recommendations. So, is there any way that we could come to the table and have some further discussions?
We've, we've really looked at this for years and years on where else it could go, and, um, a- as much as the sewer is, is a big issue, um, space is a huge issue. And, uh, I would tell, tell you, operationally, space for us is as large of an issue as, uh, as the sewer issue is. So, the sewer lines up there, um, that's the only dead space we have on the entire property, uh, and that would be the space that is the least amount of impact, uh, to, to our already very tight parking that we have, uh, all across the property, so.
And then, um, thank, Brian, I do appreciate that, very much so. Um, the last question I think I had was maybe for Mr. Bird.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your decades of service. May I not ever be in those shoes?
No, okay.
Um, I'm kidding. Um, so, in, in the discussion with the Planning and Zoning, uh, Committee, were there any recommendations that the Planning and Zoning Committee had done on its own to work with Iron Trail to suggest alternative locations, keeping mindful of their tight space and need for, uh, lot, the lot usage for their sale of their vehicles?
To answer your question, yes, there was, and if, if you were to back out further, the east end of the existing Toyota building, um, I, I don't know what they use that end for, there's a lot of cars there that I think maybe are unreparable or, or whatever, seems to be some, you say not real desirable vehicles parked back there. And I realize they need that space, but, uh, to, to me, that looked like a good spot. Or to the, uh, the north, northwest of the Toyota building, right off the highway, um, you could, could get it in there. And that wouldn't involve a, a city variance at all. Well, yeah, if you look to the east there, there's, uh-- And we're not talking, we're not talking a real big building here, I don't remember the exact dimensions, I think 17 by something, was it? But I think there's other places to put it on the property that would make it work for everybody, and even if they did put a sump in and transfer pump, I mean, that's real common now, you see that with septic tanks and everything, you know, their mound systems, everything's pumping uphill. I think there's ways to do it without a, a, of, of lot, lot more expense, but, uh, yeah, and, you know, one other thing that was brought up, if you take that corner over towards Menards, the frontage road there, there's a, there's a big pie shape there, and, and I get it, it's probably a block away from the building, but, you know, there's a, there's a spot there, and I know the land is for sale, there's a sign there. It'd be a good spot there, too. Um, another place I looked at when I was down at Menards the other day would be the northwest corner of the parking lot, um, which would be way over this way. And, yeah, it's gonna cost a few parking spots, but, uh, you know, if they were to park cars on the south side of the existing Chevy lot, you, I think you would make up for them, and them cars could park there without any variance. By knowledge.
Well, I, I really appreciate you, I'm just, I'm trying to understand from everybody's point and, and trying to, this is a tough, I mean, this is a tough decision and it's a tough situation.
I get, I get it, and, and again, if you look here at the northwest corner, there's like a little pie there, you know, it's kind of a dead area, I think, for them. There's cars there, yes. Um, if they moved th- those cars where they're projecting, excuse me, to put this car wash, I mean, they could put it anywhere there, but--
And Mayor, thank you for allowing me to continue with my comments, I just really wanted--
Please, uh, please--
No, I'm, I'm finished, and I just wanted to get some clarification and try to see if we could work together, and, and we'll just have to see what happens in the future. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and, and one of the things that come out of here, uh, before we go to Counsel Bearbo, is that, uh, it appears from my perspective only, that this is a, this requires more, more information from our, our Park and Public Works Director, and those are, I think, in respect to some of the things that came up before we make a decision, that's why I have further days in which to do so. So, the more information we can glean from both parties, the better understanding we're gonna have to, to make a, a, an informed decision about, with all the factors being laid out on the table. Counsel Bearbo?
Yeah, I, I've got some, uh, issues here, and actually, I'm gonna look at a pro side for the business this time a little bit. Number one, if you put that new building up on the north side, the shallowness from there to get to the sewer on the south side, I don't care what kind of sump system or lift station you put in there, you've got too much bare ground, too much bare blacktop, that frost will go deeper than heck. Take a look at where our streets and our stuff freeze, and it's gonna freeze all the way across there, because there's gonna be so shallow where that building would be on the north side to get to a four-foot depth on the south side, to pick up the sewer that's already existing. You can't do it. If you've got one lift station, that's, that's probably an eight-by-eight space or a 10-by-10 space, you've still got all that blacktop to come across, and that frost will go down. Look at Midway, what happens there? For sewers and water lines there, because everything's so shallow up, up there where there's blacktop, it'll freeze twice as fast. Where you have a cleared surface, and you got cars running over that all the ti- all the time, the frost goes down, goes down, goes down. The northwest corner, same way, you have to come across to pick up a sewer. There's nothing on the east end of Menards parking lot, there's no sewer there, there's nothing. You'd have to go all the way down to, uh, Menards Line, across that same kind of blacktop that they keep open, where they have cars parked and stuff, and they have to keep it plowed. Plus, we just heard from the residents that that line going down to 18th Street, for sewer, they have problems with it all the time, and, and that is true, we've seen that. Our mayor's family used to live on that line, he had nothing but trouble when they were, when they lived on 18th Street. They've had all kinds of problems with that. So, that puts you, plus, where they put the new building, I would assume they're using the one, one wall, the north wall of that, or south wall of that current building, you're not gonna build another wall alongside of that, they'll utilize the wall that's there existing and put some type of water barrier a- along there, so they don't have relay block and a separate set of block. That costs lots of money to lay an extra side of block, especially with the cost of, uh, building materials nowadays, we don't know where they're going. I can understand from a business standpoint, where you're not gonna want to spend a ton of business, you'd rather have a three, three sides than four sides. You may have to spend a little extra to put a waterproofing system on that, uh, north side of the building they're proposing. So, there's a lot of things. The east end would be similar to the same thing, they'd have to go out to 12th Avenue with the sewer, and they still need to get, uh, permission probably from Kentucky Friday to go across to hook up unless they went away down right away, and they'd still need per- permission, uh, from the city to do that, to get to the 12th Avenue sewer. So, you got a lot of things to consider. What's the best for the business? What's the best for the residents? I can't see a lot of noise if you have an east end opening and a west end o- opening, it'll be bad for the residents at this point. You've got washkies with the big blowers in there. Stand outside a washki's once when their blowers are going inside, you don't hear much outside with the doors wide open, you hear more from the actual washing, uh, than you do the, the blower system, because they're in the middle of the system when they do that, because they need a place to dry off the vehicles after that. So, I'm just putting you the second thought to think about, you know? I'm a little more cautious on the sewer end, but I think when you do the calculations, if, uh, they're looking at only 30 cars a day for their own use going through there to 35, that won't plug up that sewer, because they have to have all the silt and all that garbage out of, there by state law, you have to have these big traps, and they have to be inspected. So-- So, I'm kind of in the middle now on this, uh, both ways, when you start looking at the alternatives. I don't like the alternatives, because it'll cause more problems, uh, with freezing than the other. The lift station is only so much of that whole lot. Start putting, go talk to anybody that does sewer work in the winter time, where the deepest parts go down is where the traffic is. That lot has traffic all the time, and it's plowed. So, I look at Midway. Same freeze-ups, my, my own daughter lives there, and said freeze-ups twice now, and that costs a lot of money to fix and take care of. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, thank you. Uh, i- i- we don't have a city, uh, engineer here, our engineer of record, which is a CH, but I, is there, understanding representative, uh, from, uh, Benchmark that's here? Is there any, uh-- Yeah, would you please? Um, so, just to clarify, get some additional information for us, you know, you're a professional in the area of record, we have our own engineer of record, have you seen the engineering on this, uh, on this proposal?
Um, also, I'm Jeremy Shorzy with Benchmark Engineering. Um, I, I am a little new to this project, so I haven't seen the actual engineering, uh, specifications for the car wash.
Okay, I was gonna ask you a couple of engineering questions, but thank you very much, appreciate it, all right? Okay, um--
Mayor?
Uh, yes, Counsel Freely?
I don't know that it's timely to do this, but I have sought legal opinion with regard to my status on this decision, and I've gotten two opinions, both of which have advised me to recuse myself from decision-making on this due to a sporadic contractual association I've had with Iron Trail. Ironically, typically driving their vehicles to Duluth to get them washed at the Miller Hill Car Wash, um, so in any event, they've, I've been advised that I should not have any opinion with regard to this decision when it's eventually rendered, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Counsel Freely. And so, um, we do have 30 days in which to make the decision, you know, uh, legally, and, uh, there, we have, do have the authority to make a motion at this time to move forward one way or the other. Uh, from my perspective, I'd like to g- g- give us some more time to talk to our engineering firm, to look at some of these things moving forward before we render a decision one way or the other. And, uh, so, uh, I know there's been some concerns about, uh, your, uh, employment, I, I've seen it in writing, I've seen it in some other, uh, social media formats about, you know, uh, you're not, you, you, you know, you work there, you know, sporadically, and so you shouldn't be able to make a decision about that, and I've heard that and where it's coming from. And so, I, I did speak to our city attorney as well, and, uh, when it comes time to render his issues, and I'll have to determine whether or not I, too, have to recuse myself from a decision because of a comment made, uh, about, uh, what my, uh, association with Iron Trail Motors, which is this, and the public needs to know, that there's no conflict from my perspective. However, I want to make sure that I let everybody know upfront, I bought a car from Iron Trail Motors, I get my car serviced from Iron Trail Motors, and so that's considered to be a conflict of interest, I'm sorry, I think I have a dutiful responsibility as an elected official to make a, a reasonable decision, not based on bias. Why, so whoever makes those comments, I just want to let you know that I may have to recuse myself, depending upon the opinion that I get from our city attorney, and I have spoken to him earlier today, so I think that's unfortunate, over a car wash. So, um, that being said, uh, the action, uh, that, uh, we can't take action today, I would suggest that we get some more information from our partner, our Public Works Director about the sewer, the lines, and, and all those kind of things that dep, what can be done, what are the options moving forward, and if in fact there is a viable option for Iron Trail, they, uh, the presentation by Iron Trail is that, uh, there is no other option based upon what their needs are and what they can provide and the costs associated with that. But if there is another option, and we do find out there's another option, then I think the city has a dutiful responsibility to be able to help facilitate some kind of a change in order for them, to be accommodating them to make, to be able to car wash. So, all those a- questions have to be answered, in my opinion. So, that's my personal perspective, looking for, uh, a counsel, uh, comments, questions, and potential motions, uh, moving forward. Once again, just let, uh, for the public to know, uh, this is a public hearing in which we need to render a decision on an appeal, on a planning and zoning decision, we have 30 days in which to do so, and our decision is the final decision as the elected body, according to the charter. So, that being said, any questions, comments, concerns, or motions by the counsel?
I'm concerned, Mayor, uh, about your comment that you just made. Hell, I've bought cars from washkies when we're dealing with all the washki property and transfers and titles and all this stuff with their new facility and the stuff, and I've bought all of my cars basically from washki motors, and I never had to recuse from my legal advice, because I wasn't getting any profitability out of it. Gary, I understand, because he's been given a salary, uh, from them, and he's collected money that benefits him from working for them. But, Mayor, I don't think you need to recuse, we could get down to where you don't have enough people to vote on, on this council when it comes to a final decision. So, I think you can vote, that's my personal opinion.
Well, I just wanted to clarify the comments made publicly with respect to that, both on social media and others, so I just want to make sure that I make, make that, uh, as a, um, a disclosure, as, uh, and make sure that there is no, um, conflict of interest in that regard, or there's no intent on my part, but I understand people are, are emotional about this, uh, this particular issue, and so, you know, the comments made are based upon that, but I want to make sure that, you know, we're upfront and legal as, when we make decisions, uh, that affect our city and our businesses and our citizens. So, that being said, what, uh, what is the, uh, counsel's action? I, I, I would like to see us get some additional information, and, and we have to come back to make that decision, get the invi- different information, bring our, our people that, uh, to answer the questions we all had, and some of the questions that were asked here, and then, and then, and then, and then render the decision. So, those are my comments, Counsel Bearbo?
Yeah, Mayor, I'm gonna make a, a motion on this, I'm gonna ask, uh, Iron Trail, first of all, I'm guessing you're not gonna start this project, uh, in the winter time, it'd be in next spring, correct? Or am I wrong on that? Do you have a clue on that? Most people don't like to build in the winter because of the increased costs.
Yeah, right, right, I think that'd probably be one of the situations.
Mr. Lindahl?
Yeah, Darwin Lindahl. Yeah, I think probably from the standpoint, because we, obviously, we need to get a decision on this before we actually go, go into construction drawings and engineering, you know, for the addition, so that's gonna take some time. Uh, just with, uh, the supply chain issues with materials and so forth, that's gonna take, so I would say conceivably, yes, it would be spring construction.
Okay. Then if we put a two, two-week delay, delay right now on this to get the other information from our engineering staff and other, that would not be a, a problem for the business at this point?
No, no.
Can we make a decision at that time?
Right, and, and I would also add to that is, obviously, um, when we started getting into more and into the engineering and working with the, uh, the city engineering department, uh, we'd also have, uh, you know-- we would also have, you know, Benchmark Engineering work with them.
Well, that would be part of
Yes.
my motion to delay the decision on this project for two weeks. Get together the appropriate parties, our engineering staff, your engineering staff, the appropriate people from our Public Works, whoever needs to be involved with this. And that'd be a special meeting to make a decision at that time. That's my motion.
Thank you, Council Bearbu. I did have a sidebar with our city attorney. The recommendation was that if we're not gonna make a decision today, that we take this, all the information under advisement and, and collect the data and set a special council meeting. Right? And I know that's what you said, but I just wanted to make sure, because I was talking to our city attorney while you were making that motion. I want to be respectful of that motion as you said, as you spoke it. So motion by Council Bearbu is their support. Is there support? Is there support? I realize that. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna step down and I'm gonna second the motion for further discussion. Do I have to step down officially?
Don't have to leave your chair.
Okay. So I step down and second it for, for additional discussion, additional discussion. Council Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess the reason I didn't move forward in support is I'm still not understanding the, so is the role of Benchmark on behalf of the City of Virginia or on behalf of Iron Trail Motors?
Iron Trail Motors. I would just ask them for an opinion because our, our engineer wasn't here.
But that's part of the motion to include Benchmark. So I, or was it not?
Clarify your motion, Council Bearbu.
That was part of my motion to get all parties here. And that includes Benchmark, because they have pertinent information.
Sure.
Along with what our engineer would say.
Sure.
If you don't include them, you don't know what they've looked at and what they've done. Some of it might not be available publicly, but a great portion of it probably would be, because they do have some client engineer confidentiality that would guess during the proposals on this. So whatever they could give us to support whichever direction we may end up. But yes, I wanted them included. If there's no objection from the business.
Our, our goal, our objective is gather all information from all parties before we make a cognitive decision. And that's part of the motion. So it was been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion, more discussion, Council Paulson?
No, I just didn't turn my light off. I was interrupted.
Okay, I apologize for that. Please continue.
That's okay. I just wanted to make sure that it was all-inclusive and that all parties, not just the named parties, were involved in the conversation moving forward. That's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
And as we're going, thank you, Council Paulson. Council Biondich?
Thank you. And I would also tag on to that and would like our Planning and Zoning Commission to be present as well.
Yeah, I think that's a very important part of our discussion moving forward. Thank you, Council Biondich. So it has been noted and supported to take this under advisement, do our due diligence, bring parties together, gather some more information, and set a special council meeting for a final decision. That is the motion. And there is support for that motion. Is there any further discussion for that motion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
I'll have to recuse.
So there's one, two, three, four, five ayes, one recusal. And I'm gonna ask our city attorney, do you think based upon, is there a perception of impropriety on my part because of my affiliation as a private citizen in the purchase of a product which I have continuing service done? Is that grounds for recusal?
Mayor, as it relates to this vote, I think you're, you're safe to make this vote and we'll, we'll discuss the, the next votes. But for purposes of the procedural mechanism of moving or resetting, it, it doesn't touch on the substance of it, and I think the conflict analysis can be set aside for this vote.
In this particular case, I, I can vote aye, so I shall vote aye. Opposed, none, one recusal. Motion passes. And we will get our stuff, do we vote? Okay. And we'll get all our, our duck, we'll get the proposal, set the council meeting. Every single party that's signed up on that list will be notified. And, and any additional people that would like to come to the table on either the appellant or the side of the aisle, certainly we're welcome to do that as well when we set that special council meeting. So we have thirty days in which to do that, and we shall. Thank you, everybody, for coming to the public hearing today, and we hope to have this resolved in the next thirty days. Thank you. We stand adjourned at 2:59 PM.